The disrespect. You guys, we're gonna give it another, we'll give it another minute before we start at six o'clock. Before we start the meeting, I'll introduce everybody. I have Jay Scheckman is here.
Present.
John Baranco is present. Oh, Mary Furtig is not here. Not yet. Patrick McTeague, Sherry McCartney down at the end, Steve Gannon and Marilyn, I don't know what your last name, Marilyn. Mamano. And now, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. All right. And do I have an approval of the minutes from last meeting?
So, um, sorry.
Yes? Sure. I thought I just did.
Oh, sorry, you introduce, you introduce staff.
I didn't introduce staff. You want to, you want to go through staff? You want me to go through?
Ella can do it, if you want, if you want.
Yeah.
Good evening, board members, members of the public. Ella Parker, I'm a design and planning manager. Tonight with staff, we have Sharie Wallen, Assistant City Attorney, Nancy Garcia and Yvonne Redding on our planning staff. Thank you.
All right. We have a quorum, and do I have an approval of the minutes from last month or a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay. And do we have anyone who speaks?
Can we do a vote?
Sorry, just for the record.
Sure.
We're gonna say that it was first by Ms. McCartney, second by Mr. McTeague, and then voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Anybody who's speaking tonight, you want to swear in anyone who's speaking tonight, and I believe that you guys already signed in. Did everyone sign in?
If you're gonna speak to the board tonight, can you please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in?
Anyone who's speaking.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, so the first agenda item is case one. Do we have any disclosures?
Another thing, do you want to accept all the staff reports for all the items?
Yes. Any disclosures? You want to start with Mr. Gannon?
None.
None.
None for me?
Patrick, none.
Marilyn, none.
Jay, none.
Sharie, none.
And Chair, would you like to hear all the first three items together and then vote on them separately?
Yes, that would be, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
We can do all three together. And then we'll vote on them separately?
There's some, there might be some issues with the vacation, so I, I don't rec, I don't suggest that right now. You'll see.
Okay, so let's start with case one, and then we'll see where it goes from there. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chana Loda. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Knight, with offices at 515 East Lasolis, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I'm here tonight on behalf of Kuwait Water Facilities Florida. Kuwait is the design builder, excuse me, of the new Prospect Lake Clean Water Plant. I also have with me a few other representatives. We have two individuals from Kuwait, Matt Allen and Freddie Arugro, as well as someone from the project company, Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, Joseph Pedron. We also have a representative from police surveying who has prepared these applications, Elizabeth Zurut Desian. Okay. And we had intended to present all three together because they all do relate to the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center. I understand counsel right before this hearing advised me of a condition, thank you, that they are looking to potentially include. I don't think that it needs to hold up consideration. I can explain why as we go through. So if you, if it's your preference, I'd still like to be able to present them because they all are interrelated together. Okay, all right. Well, I'll do, I will do my best to, to walk you through first with the plat. I believe that's item number one on the, excuse me, just trying to get this over here. Item number one on the agenda. So, item number one is approval of the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center plat. It seeks to plat approximately 28.459 acres. It is, also seeks to vacate two items, more specifically, the original center 25 feet of Hawkins Road, which you will see in a moment, as well as a portion of the utility and well easement for the plat to our north. Here is the area where the new Clean Water Center will be going. For those of you that are not aware, the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center is the new state-of-the-art reverse osmosis clean water treatment plant that is being constructed by the city of Fort Lauderdale to replace the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. This is the site that was located, the actual facility, I don't know if you can see where I'm showing you on the screen. The actual facility is going to be located within that area southwest of the lake. This area of the city is, pretty much everything is owned by the city of Fort Lauderdale. It's located north of Prospect Road, west of Northwest 31st Avenue. Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport is located further to the west. Cypress Creek Road is to the north, and then of course, further to the west of Hawkins Road, which is the right-of-way that you see there in the middle, is State Road 7. The city effectively owns pretty much everything that you see, with the exception of the lofts at Palm Air, which is the townhome community located north of the lake, as well as a few commercial concerns on 31st and 441. This is the site of the city's wellfields, as well as some other city facilities that are there. The city actually owns the lake that you see there to the north as well. We are seeking to plat the property that you see in blue. Again, it's approximately 28.4 acres. Hawkins Road, which is located on the far west side of the plat, it's a 70-foot right-of-way. The property located to the west of Hawkins Road is actually platted by the old Palm Beach Farms plat, and so the center 25 feet of that road was actually dedicated and created by plat, so we are seeking to vacate that by virtue of the replat of this property. All of the property essentially to the east of Hawkins Road, with the exception of the lake and the lofts to the north, is unplatted property. As we will have two principal buildings part of the plat, part of the plant, we need to plat the property. You can see the, the plant is in a very unique, and this is, I think, gonna be important later on, but I'm gonna just point it out now. The plant is in a very specific location because of a number of factors. First, you have the lake located to the north and to the east. We have the flight path for Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport that constrains us with respect to certain heights and whatnot. We have those two ponds, those are the sludge ponds that currently serve the Five Ash Plant, and as you will see when I get to some renderings for the site, the, the plant is a series of foundations with underground interconnected pipes that serve a, a series of filtration systems and treatment systems that are above ground that is specifically designed and laid out. And because of that, given the constraints that we have, it's mitigating our need to vacate Hawkins Road. So I'll just quick, here again is a close-up. This is basically the foundations for the plant. You can see the, the building there that is within the gray shaded area, that's the administration building, that, as you can see, is encroaching into Hawkins Road. Here's a close-up version. Again, I'll just state it now, but I'll restate it during the presentation on the vacation applications. Hawkins Road is a 70-foot right-of-way that has never been constructed. It consists of a substandard two-lane road that comes off of Prospect and deadens about halfway into the property. It is gated both at the north and the south edge, and is secured because of the facility, facilities that lie within. The, as part of the plat, we're vacating that center 25 feet that was dedicated by the Palm Beach Farms, as well as this utility and well easement that you see that is on the perimeter of the plat to the north. Here's just a, kind of a, a view, a rendering of the plant. Obviously, you're not seeing the detail that you're gonna normally see on the administration building, that's more for massing, but this is a view looking to the north, east, northwest, forgive me. You see the lake to the north, and as you can see, it is a series of above-ground filtration systems, interconnected pipes below grade that create this plant. We do have, just so you know, similar to what happened with the city, a Fort Lauderdale police station, we do have a plat agreement with Broward County that does allow us to pull permits for the two principal buildings, which is the administration building that's over adjacent to Hawkins Road, as well as the nanofiltration building at the north, before the plat is recorded. And that will become important with respect to the vacation applications in a moment. And this is just a view looking from the north to the south. Again, you see Hawkins Road, which will become a private drive. We don't need the full 70 feet width, but we do need a portion of that to accommodate the plant. And that is my presentation. I will just point out that in the backup, we did hold a community meeting on October 9th at Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport. I believe both the application, as well as the staff report in the backup, shows that we are meeting all the criteria of the city code for approval of this application. And I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public. Is there anyone from the board that wants to speak on it?
Questions for the applicant?
Yep.
So if you, if you're vacating 25 feet, then is the rest of it, is the other side, is being vacated to an adjoining property owner?
Well, the city owns the property on both sides. I will go back to the aerial just to give you a perspective here. The city basically owns everything you see in this image, with the exception of the townhomes and those commercial buildings over on 31st. This is entirely the wellfields that you could, as you can see. I'll go back one more. Sorry, wrong way. You can almost see the, how the road actually ends. It's paved to about what the complex of buildings that you see on the west side of the road, which they use this for utility, lay down a pipe, I think there's a canine training facility there, as well as, again, the city's wellheads are located throughout this entire property. And I forget, so the, the Hawkins Road, which you'll see in a moment, it was created by three separate instruments. The initial Hawkins Road, the 25 feet, was created by the Palm Beach Farms plat located to the west, and then the owner dedicated the outside 22.5 feet, that gave it the total of 70 feet in width, via two separate deed instruments, thus the two separate vacation applications that we have.
And, and as part of the plant that's being, I'm, I'm not ultra-familiar with the structure that was used, is that going, is that land going to be deeded to a private entity?
No, it's owned by the, this is a plant that'll, it's owned by the city of Fort Lauderdale.
To, it's not gonna revert to any private owner, okay. So, why, why aren't you just vacating the whole road?
We are.
The, the other 50 feet?
We are vac, we are. The, the center 25 feet is being effectively vacated by plat because it was dedicated by plat. So it, when, by virtue of replating that, it will be vacated.
Okay.
The outside 22 feet, which were dedicated by deed, were vacating by the two separate vacation applications that you have for.
That makes sense.
Right. We hope.
Anyone else on the board? Chair, come on. Yep. Do it.
Question. A couple things. One, you had an image of the plat there.
Yep.
Would you mind zooming in on the plat note, or can you zoom in on that plat?
I can tell you what it is. I don't know how to do that. It's a PowerPoint, but the plat note, and I, thank you for asking me, because I neglected to mention.
He may know how to zoom in.
The plat note is gonna be restricted to 43,000 square feet of industrial use, which is more than enough to accommodate the two principal buildings that we have proposed for the property. If you, if you can see the actual site plan that I have, the plant actually ends about here. We are actually pladding more property than what is required for the initial plant construction, just to accommodate, just to accommodate in, any expansion in the future. So, the 43,000 is to accommodate not only the existing square footage that's needed for the nanofiltration building and the administration building, but also for any future expansion that may occur there.
And one last question, and you're probably the only one who can answer this, because I don't know that anybody else at the city talks to the folks who make these decisions, but why is it that they did not replat the entire parcel, including all the property that's owned by the city of Fort Lauderdale?
Well, some of it is effectively unusable because it is the city's wellfields, but it's, it's a product of trying to keep it as focused as possible to eliminate any potential future off-site improvements that may be requested by Broward County.
Okay.
One thing you can't see here, but it's on the site plan, is, for example, we are providing a westbound right turn lane off of Prospect into the site. There's no access to the actual site, to Cypress Creek Road. If you saw the aerial, it's actually unimproved. It's just regu, it's just dirt and grass, and we intended to keep it that way for the neighbors to the east, so that it would never be a road.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any motions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Furtig walked in. Yes, you have, that's what I was just gonna address with you, because you just walked in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I visited the site, and it's just beautiful up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It is, yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes, using our new cheat sheets? I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve, I move to recommend approval of case number, what's this number? Sorry, guys. Case number.
UDP.
Case UDP, P23004, based on the following findings of fact, e.g. the facts in the city staff report, and or based on the testimony heard by, by, based on the testimony heard by the applicant and the board, hereby finds that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report, and we have adopted all of the conditions in the staff report already, in general.
I don't, oh, I, do you, I don't believe you have conditions listed there. Do you want to clarify?
If applicable, if applicable.
Okay, no conditions.
No conditions. The board recommended approval of the application. It's subject to all the conditions, but there are no conditions, so that's not applicable. Period. That's it.
Second. You wanna call a roll?
Sir. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, so now we're going on to number two, case number UDP V23006, for the vacation of right-of-way. Do we have any disclosures? Will you start with Ms. Furtig?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Crush.
I'm sorry, spoke with Mr. Crush and I visited the site. I'm still on hers? Or she's number two because we switched two and three? Okay, I visited the site, but we didn't talk.
Yes, no. And it's actually, I, well, right now we're doing two, but I'm also three, just so you know.
Okay, well, I'm a little confused, but what can I say?
Yeah, I'm confused too, because our package-
Is something wrong with my mic? We're only on two, and I can't hear the disclosure that I have to say.
Right.
Well, can I ask you, okay, let me look at my agenda.
Originally, just, Mary wasn't here, but originally we were going to do one, two, and three together, but the city attorney wants to, has something to say about the vacation of right, so we're doing one first, which was just passed, now we're doing two, and after she has what she has to say, maybe there's an opportunity to do two and three at the same time, or wait?
Well, can I just say that two on mine is Jason Crush, vacation of right-of-way?
I have the revised one. And it says Yvonne Redding. Yeah, we're all shuffled here, that's what I think the problem is. That's okay.
That's why we weren't clear. I get it.
I'm the only one that's, that's on point, but I am the chair.
So they moved, they moved out.
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
All right, so on all of these, I visited the site and it's lovely.
So just for clarification, sorry, just, let's just for clarification for the record, you're actually on what would be item two, but the case number is UDP V23006.
That's what I read.
Six, yes.
Yes.
I know, I'm just-
I know, it was good. You did great. You're doing great.
That's items.
All right, next item. So that's the vacation of right-of-way.
I got it, yeah, thanks.
So we're doing disclosures on that one, right? Okay. Mary visited. Mr. Gannon?
No disclosures.
None.
None for me.
Patrick, none.
Marilyn, none.
Jay, none.
None.
All right, ready, rock.
Uh, sorry, yeah, so for this item, I'm requesting it to be continued to the next board meeting. The deputy city attorney previously gave instructions not to have this on this agenda. There are certain issues that are outstanding with FPNL that the city attorney's office, as well as city staff, need to resolve. If you look in your backup, you will not see a letter of no objection, there's, you know, we have a legal opinion on that, and we have already opined that that's not required for this application, but there are some other issues pertaining to the franchise agreement, as well as an adjacent easement, that we need to resolve with FPNL prior to this going forward.
Is this also applicable for three, or is it only, yes?
That's correct, but I didn't want to presume that you were going to be okay with three as well.
No, 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 I don't know, I mean, we can vote on them separately, I just want to make sure where it's also applicable on three, and then we'll vote on it.
So can I move to defer?
Yeah.
You could.
Okay, two and three, can I move to defer two and three?
I think you got to do it separately.
All right, just two, I'm just sorry.
Mary, real quick, I have a quick question. In the past, we've approved these subject to those agreements being negotiated after the fact, is that not an option here?
This one's a little bit more complicated, because there is an issue of a request for the actual vacation not to be effective until the recording of the plat, but then there's issues pertaining to when that plat will be recorded, so it's a, I don't want to go on and on and on, but that's some of it.
No problem, I was just seeing if there's a way to get it done tonight.
I just want to chime in that I'm, I'm familiar with the issue, because the infrastructure task force is familiar with the project, and the FPNL connection is critical. And so I would certainly support a deferral to the resolving of those issues. There's no point going forward if we can't get electricity to the plant. So in, in the spirit of getting this thing resolved, I would support a deferral, and I don't know if I should make that recommendation, Mary already made it.
I think Mary already made it, but if you'd like to second it-
I would certainly like to second it.
Okay. Mary made it. Ms. Mamano seconded it, and if you want to take a roll call, we can do that.
So just for clarification, is the, is the board meeting, what are we, April, May? May board meeting?
May board meeting.
Deferred to the May board meeting.
May.
Is May enough time, though? Is May enough time to get you to resolve this?
Hold on. Did you want to speak on the subject?
I just wanted to, if the deferral, we can't, sorry. Janalota with Holland and I, on behalf of QWIT. I presently am out of, out of the state on May 15th. This is an item that is critical, that we need to move forward, because as you saw from the plat, a portion of the plant is physically going to be in the right-of-way that is subject to the applications that's before you tonight. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there.
I'm sure.
The issue with FPL is, FPL presently has a transmission line facility that's located within an easement that's located west of the right-of-way. Their facilities are not in the right-of-way, which is why the city attorney's office had previously opined that it wasn't required for them to have necessarily a no objection letter. We have worked out with FPL dedication language for a public utility easement within the area that's totally west of the plant, to the west-platted property line, which it's just a matter now of logistics of getting the right language, which is literally one word at this point. I understand the city attorney's concerns. Obviously, my preference is to move it forward tonight if we can, with whatever conditions that they have, that we may try to work that all out before it's considered by the city commission, and if need be, we can certainly defer the item on the city commission as long as necessary to assure the issues here. I don't believe to the one board members that it's an issue of bringing power to the plant, it's merely just the access for them to be able to get to the transmission power lines that they have that's located on the west side of the right-of-way.
So what we have right now is a motion that's on the, on the table, so we need to vote, although you've contributed to that, we appreciate it, there's a motion, we need to take a vote on the motion.
Can we have some, can we have some more discussion?
You can, yeah, but let me just ask one thing before.
Yeah, sure, sure.
If, if there, if the motion to deferral passes, if it defers, would you prefer a June date if you can't be here in May, or do you want to do it in May? Because I know that you want to get it done, I'm just saying in the air of caution.
I would not want to defer to June, if anything, to May, and then we'll just have to figure something out, but I, I know I am out of the state, and it's not something that can be unfortunately scheduled.
I understand, I just wanted to ask.
I appreciate you, thank you.
All right, so we can have some discussion first.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments on this, and I too want to get this thing built as soon as possible, so I bounce back to the council. Obviously, you opined that you would prefer it, but given the, the description of the issue, i.e., it is not a question of bringing power to the plant, it's a question of relocating or providing for an easement off of the site of the plant, I, I need, we need this plant to get built as soon as possible.
It's, it's not really that, it's not as simple as that, there's-
Okay, so explain.
So there is a franchise agreement that applies for public right-of-ways. So this particular, this road is a public right-of-way as it stands. So the problem is that we are supposed to allow FPNL to build their facilities in that public right-of-way. So they're requesting the ability to do that, however, that affects this application because we don't want that, hence why we're vacating. So there has to be more of a discussion of how we're going to deal with that request of theirs to, they're actually asking for the entire area, and, well, that makes it really difficult to say it's no longer needed for a public purpose now, doesn't it? So we have to have more discussions with city staff, and, you know, there are further details, but the, we do not want a situation where there's a potential violation of the franchise agreement on the city's end, so we do need some more time to discuss these matters with FPNL.
And you think, oh, you have another question?
All right, I, I want to finish this, okay. I regret the situation, because I would, I regret that we have this situation, because everybody wants this done as soon as possible, but I have to defer to council on this, and I will-
I completely understand, but I just want to make it clear, because I've been directly speaking with FPL, they have agreed, and it's actually through the city's offices that we came up with this concept of dedicating back, within the right-of-way that's not being used for the plant, a public utility easement, which will travel underneath their franchise agreement, which FPL has agreed to. So it's, the solution is in play, they have the sketch and legal, which will be a dedication on the plat. My understanding is that the city attorney's office wants to have as a condition of the approval that the vacation is not effective until the plat is recorded, are, which may be what we can do at the end of the day, it's just an issue as to whether or not we can still pull the permits that we need for the infrastructure that's going to be in the right-of-way timely to keep everything on track before that plat is recorded. So that was, I, I believe was the main issue that they had, that we had concerns with. Now, we're fine if this board, you know, assuming the city attorney's office agrees, proceeds forward with that condition, and then we'll see how we can get it resolved before city commission. But at the end of the day, I, I understand and would, would ask you to defer to your, your council.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's one of the issues, but again, there, there's a team of us that are working on this, I worked on certain portions, we have a real estate attorney that's very good, Sean, we had a long discussion before I got here, I don't have, you know, any incentive to delay it, other than legal reasons, that's why I'm here, so, you know.
And you think that that would be wrapped up by, by May?
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
So let's call a roll.
Okay. Somebody's got to make a motion. Oh, we made it?
I made it, I made it.
All right, done, done.
See, I'm getting the swing of this.
It's okay, you run for president.
Just a reminder, this is a motion to defer the case UDP V23006 to the May 15th meeting, which was made by Ms. Furtig, seconded by Mamano. We'll call Mr. Baranco?
No.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
No.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Passes six to two.
All right, now we have case number UDP V23007, same thing, vacation of right-of-way, and any public disclosures, any disclosures by the board, sorry.
Can we just move to defer, or we need to do our disclosures?
I don't know, do we need to do disclosures first?
All right, Jerry.
There he goes.
Request for deferral, you may or may not do disclosures, you don't have to, because it's just a request for a deferral, so.
Mary, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to move to defer.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, you can call the roll.
So that is to, a motion to defer to the May 15th meeting, case number UDP V23007, was made by Ms. Furtig, seconded by Ms. Mamano. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
No.
Mr. Scheckman?
No.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Six to two.
Moving on.
All right, now we are on case number four, UDP V23003, and this is Mr. Crush. Mary Furtig was just waiting.
Well, as you, as you might have heard, I spoke with Mr. Crush and I visited the site, which, which he had to walk me through how to, how to find where there could possibly be an alley on that site, but I guess I'm not supposed to say that, so.
All right.
No, you can say that.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Email, email with Mr. Crush and, email and voicemail.
Mr. Baranco?
Spoke with Mr. Crush and visited the site.
I spoke with Mr. Crush, Mr. McTeague.
Patrick, phone call from Mr. Crush.
Marilyn, a phone call, which we did not connect, so no, no disclosures.
Jay Scheckman, site visit?
I spoke with Mr. Crush.
All right, we're ready.
That's it.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Jason Crush with Crush Law, on behalf of the applicant, Local Equity 3 LLC, they're the property owner of property located at 2901 South Federal Highway. Just to locate you, for those who didn't do a site visit, State Route 84 is across the top, you see the oil fields, the gas tanks to the east, and this is the enterprise car rentals just to the north of us, you're probably familiar with Whale's Garage in between Old Dixie and South Federal Highway. The new Sailor Man is over in the left-hand corner on the bottom. You'll see that our client owns the majority of this block, they don't own the corner piece where the electrical supply store is, but you'll see in the yellow is a 98-by-16-foot alley. This alley was dedicated by plat in 1925, when I think there were different ideals of what would happen along Dixie Highway back then. These were the access alleys behind frontage that was going to be on Dixie Highway. As we all know, the zoning down there now is B3, which is light industrial, the neighborhood is a different type of use than what was contemplated at the time. Now, the property to the north was never platted, so this alley never went through, and our client actually owns that property as well. What it looks like today, the reason why Mary couldn't find the alley, is because it is never paved and never used as an alley. It actually seemed to have been used, as far back as I can tell from aerials, as the side yard and garbage pickup for what was there before, was the two-story apartment building, which now has been demoed at this point.
Okay.
The reason why we're requesting alley vacation is because it's not being used, it's never been used, and we actually are processing a DRC application right now to put a public mini-storage facility on the site. We do own the entire site, this proposal is for the southern portion of the site, where I've overlaid the site plan. The client has not decided what they want to do with the northern portion, but that will be back to you at some point, because we'll have to plat that, since it had never been platted before. As you can see, where the alley is today, would go right through the middle of the building, so we're here to ask for the vacation of the alley, so that we can proceed with our DRC approval. Just to give you an idea, it's not your standard box with nothing on it, we did do, working with our planner, Yvonne Redding, made us do finish, you know, articulation, fenestrations, and windows, instead of just being a concrete box. She's a hard, she drives a hard bargain. So we think it's a, a good addition to this B3 zoning district in this area, and obviously, we know miniStorage is one of the largest growing areas, because everybody seems to be moving into condos and not having enough storage, that we believe that we meet the criteria, that it's never been used, there will be no impact to pedestrians, there will be no impact to vehicular traffic. There are a couple of conditions in the staff report, and we're agreeable to those conditions, and we're here to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public, here to-
Do you adopt the findings of fact in the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you. And do you include all the conditions in the staff report?
With all conditions in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. McTeague.
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Next is case five, UDP Z23016, and disclosures starting with Ms. Furtig.
I spoke with Ms. Toothaker and I visited the site.
Steve Gannon, I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
Allowing me to be here this evening, I am requesting a rezoning of the, do I have the clicker, I'm sorry, I'm a little out of it today. Sorry. How do I do that? Thank you. Thank you. Show that to you on the next slide, which is the rezoning. So it's in the northwest, this is a land use Northwest Regional Activity Center. You can see it's part of a block, and I'll show you on the next slide that other portions of the block have already been rezoned. Here, you can see, we're requesting a rezoning to Northwest Rack M U W, and as you can see, the purple is the Northwest Rack zoning that we're requesting, and the rest of the block has already been rezoned. Next slide. We've, this is, as I said, it's consistent with the pattern of rezonings in this area. This was the intention behind when the city did the land use plan amendment, to identify these areas as Northwest Rack. So I think you'll be seeing, you know, more of these. I know you've already considered a great deal of them. Next slide. We did a comparison between RMM25, which is the zoning today, and the Northwest Rack. It's very similar in nature. Ultimately, I believe this will be a residential project, but we're, obviously, that'll come back. Next slide. And just another comparison of RMM25 and Northwest Rack. Next slide. The rezoning does comply with all of the category. I don't need to read it to you, it's in your backup. We did a full analysis, obviously, before we got to this point, but it is, it is in compliance with the land use plan. It's compliant with the associated areas around it. And, next slide, I'm not sure if we, yeah, and I did want to correct one thing that's in your backup. You'll recall that this was actually on your agenda last month. We deferred it for an opportunity to meet with the neighborhoods again. We had done a virtual public participation meeting, and they participated in that, but we thought it was important to actually go to the neighborhood, so we didn't defer it because there were any issues, we just deferred it because we wanted to have the opportunity to go present to the neighborhood. So we did that. I did go to Dorsey Riverbend, I presented to the full association. We've been in discussions with them, and they're very interested in what ultimately will happen here, from a site planning perspective, and we obviously will present that to them at the appropriate time. Right now, there's no site plan, it's just the rezoning. And I believe that is the end, I think that's the last, right? Yes, that's the end of that.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. Anyone from the board?
Yes, I would like to, a couple of questions. Dorsey Riverbend, when you went to them, did they take a position, or are you still talking to them?
They did not take a position. They, what they asked is that when a site plan is established, that it contains some affordable housing.
Agreed. Okay, and the other question I have, and I brought this up on a number of these rezonings, I think John Baranco has also brought them up. The reduction of the front yard from the RM zone of 25 feet to the rack zone of 5 feet is, to me, quite excessive, and it does adversely impact the character of the adjacent properties. But I hope that during the site planning process, that that can be taken into account, because every time you, we keep moving these zones deeper and deeper into the residential zone, they inevitably are going to impact the existing developments, which have the more generous yard. So to me, that's a problem on our part, on our zoning's part, not on the applicant's part, but I want to bring that up every time this happens, so that, you know, I'm on the record of that.
Yes, I appreciate this.
Thank you very much.
I'll share those with the developer, what I understand. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone have a motion?
I'm happy to make one, but everybody had one tonight.
Mary, you're the best at it.
So this is the rezoning. Yes, motion to recommend approval of, of, I have to find the right agenda here. UDPZ23016, based on the findings of fact, the staff report, and we find that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, gives us, all right, someone different. You can roll call.
Second by Sheckman. Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Eight passes.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Ms. Toothaker.
Thank you very much. Everything about this rezoning is identical, except the actual piece of property. So it is also a rezoning request from RMM25 to Northwest Rack. This one is M U N E. Next slide. You can see it here outlined in red. It is in the middle of the Progresso Village Civic Association, so we met with them two times after the last, after the deferral. We met with them once, with the president and the vice president, and some of the landowners, and then we had a second meeting where we presented to the Progresso Association on Monday evening, and they did not take a position, but I've spoken to JJ enough, I don't think he has an issue with it. This is also a continuation of a pattern of rezoning, where the owner of the property is finishing off the block, or trying to finish off most of the block. So next slide. This is, obviously, it's on the corner of Northwest First Avenue and Northwest Eighth Street. We call it the Andrews Avenue Assemblage, that's what it's been referred to regularly, and it's consistent with the pattern of rezonings here. Next slide. So you can see here, it is obviously in the Northwest Rack, future land use. Next slide. And again, this is, half of the block had already been rezoned, this is a portion of the remainder of the block that is being rezoned to be consistent with the Northwest Rack M U N E. Again, just prior, similar rezonings that have happened in this neighborhood for a general pattern. Next slide. And this is, again, just the analysis of between, what the differences between RMM25. In this case, one of the properties had been rezoned to XP, and it's being used as a parking lot, which is what the XP is for, so I think, in that case, I think that, at least in my discussions with the neighbors, I think they were happy to see that change. Next slide. And again, just an analysis, and I think, next slide. And of course, again, in your backup, it's consistent with the criteria for rezoning, and I already discussed the public participation, and I think that's the end.
Anyone from the public?
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair Cohen, can you please just have, do disclosures for this case?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's right. Disclosures, I would assume they're the same, but disclosures, Mary?
Well, I spoke with Ms. Toothaker, and I visited the site.
Steve, I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
I spoke with Ms. Toothaker, and I'm familiar with the site.
Phone call with Ms. Toothaker.
I have a question. I did not speak with Ms. Toothaker, and I did not visit the site, but I did an extensive Google search. Do I have to disclose that?
Yes.
I searched Google on this one, thank you.
It's amazing how that works.
All right, anybody else?
I opened my eyes today.
I have an interesting disclosure, none.
Okay, great. All right, now that we're done with the disclosures, we will open it to the public, if anyone from the public wants to speak on this. Seeing no one from the public speaking on it, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Does anyone from the board have any questions, or have any motions, Mary?
I have a question before we get to a motion.
Okay.
How many existing residential units are there now, that will be demolished to build this building?
I don't know the answer, I'm sorry.
Well, there are a number of residential buildings. I am really, really concerned about this, because as this moves forward, we are continuing to lose affordable housing. And yes, redevelopment is a good thing, but we all are sensitive to the situation with the lack of affordable housing. But that's not your issue, again, it's our issue, a city issue. But I would like to, from my extensive Google search, show the commissioner, the board members, what the condition is of the front yards on the properties immediately across the street, which have been redeveloping fine, without any rezoning. There are townhomes with large yards, there are duplexes with large yards. So I don't recommend that you provide evidence, that's for staff or for the applicant to provide, but you may ask questions about what you saw. What I saw was, immediately across the street from this property, which is the subject of the rezoning, the area is redeveloping very nicely, with townhomes and duplexes, with very generous front yards and landscaping, and this rezoning would, in fact, say that the front yard can be 0 to 5 feet, or 5 feet. And I am, again, concerned about this, and this is something, you know, the problem with doing the rezoning, which would allow that, and relying on the fact that, oh, well, they'll come back with a site plan, you never know. So again, this is the same issue I had with the other one, but to me, this is more egregious because of the very nice redevelopment that's going on, adjacent to this site, as is, so I would not be in favor of this rezoning.
I have something to say. So, you know, the issue here is, if we're talking about affordable housing, and then we show these townhomes that are probably not affordable housing, that you're saying are redeveloping very nicely, the reason why you want density, and you want to be able to build certain buildings on certain properties, especially without having spot zoning, which this is not spot zoning, because the city has a plan with the rack, and what they're going to do with it. The problem that we have is, if you don't have the density, then you can't afford builders, won't be able to afford, to provide affordable housing in those units, such as those townhomes. So those townhomes, you probably have, I don't know, what do you have, how many do you have on that property? Six?
Six.
Right. Out of those six homes, none of them are going to be affordable housing, because then a builder is not going to build it, because he cannot then build and make profit, which is what builders do. So it is a natural course of business, where zoning always has to be looked at in a city, such as this, where we eliminate some of the spot zoning. Everyone on this board, I'm sure, wants affordable housing in Fort Lauderdale. It's not that they're against affordable housing, it's that how does that affordable housing, how does it look? And the way that it looks is generally through density. When you have density, you can then provide affordable housing, because you have that extra buffer of units that you can provide as affordable housing. So I think the solution to that is maybe, at the end of the hearing, at the end of the board meeting, you can say what's good for the city, and voice your opinion, but I think on this case in particular, I think the rezoning is appropriate, because of what I know of what the city wants to move forward with. And not only that, I think it also addresses your concern of affordable housing, because I think with density comes affordable housing, generally speaking, as long as the city also backs that up with keeping developers' feet to the fire, which they have been doing, and offering different incentives for affordable housing. That's my comment. Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I, you know, I look at this site when I was driving, and I, and there is frontage on Andrews Avenue, which to me is a little bit different than if you go back into the neighborhood. So I just wanted to mention that, because I think that's important. The issue of front yard setbacks and so forth, I think is one we're eventually going to have to discuss in terms of climate change. I just think we need to be talking about how we can green our city, but we don't, we haven't done that. I think that's a great thing to bring under, for the good of the city, is how can we do some of that? But to me, one difference about this was that it was on Andrews Avenue, you know, there's frontage on Andrews Avenue, and I think that makes a difference. And so I am gonna, if no one else makes a motion, I'm probably going to make a motion to support this. I think what the issues you're raising are really important for us to have a conversation, and I hope we set that soon, because they've come up so many times. My other thing that I'm going to bring up under, for the good of the city, but we seem to be blocked by, no, not even blocked by block, like property by property by property, and it's not just this, it's uptown and other things. We then just kind of are changing it so gradually, it just goes on year after year after year after year, and I'm wondering if we could discuss a better way to handle that.
That was probably my point for the end of the hearing.
So.
Yes. Do you have a motion, Mary?
Yeah, but I think Jay wanted to say something.
Oh, Jay wants to say something?
No, I think it's been covered. I mean, it's, this one's tricky, because, you know, it's such a small neighborhood, Progresso, and it has, it's developing into a little residential area that's walking distance to like, you know, that whole cultural arts revolution happening in the industrial area just to the west. But then, you also, we really do want to encourage redevelopment of these blocks along Andrews to help move the area forward, and, I mean, so I think that's all been covered, but I want to reiterate the balance there for everyone.
Mary, you have a motion?
Yes, as soon as I turn the page, I do. Thank you.
Could I just, before the motion, Nancy has a request. There's a clarification on a document, the authorization for one of the applicants. In your backup, it's unsigned, so she has the signed copy, so she's just going to add that verbally to the, don't worry, Stephanie, it's okay. It's good.
You thought Mary was really going to steal victory out of the jaws of defeat.
Hi, good evening, Nancy Garcia with Urban Design and Planning. I believe it's Exhibit 2, which is the agent authorization form. When I converted the form to an exhibit, it's an e-signature, so the signature was lost, but we do have the signature from the applicant authorizing Ms. Toothaker to represent them.
Can you put your full name on the record?
And just for clarification, it's BDM Ventures Florida. That is the, there's three of them, but that's the one that's unsigned in your backup, but there is a signed copy in the city's, and that will be transferred to the city commission, so that's a part of your backup.
Full name.
Nancy Garcia, Urban Design and Planning.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary.
Oh, wow, let me turn the page again. Okay, I move to recommend approval of case number UDPZ23017, based on the findings of fact, on the staff report, the testimony we heard, and we find that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Can we take roll, please?
Second by Baranco. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
No.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
No.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Six to two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Case seven. Number seven, case number UDPS23052, site plan level three. Parking reduction.
You want to do disclosures?
Yes, Mary, disclosures, starting with Ms. Vertig.
I visited the site.
Steve, I got no call for applicant's attorney.
I did, however, work, when I was in law school, for the owner of Luigi's Pizza. I don't know if I have to disclose that, I haven't talked to him in years.
No.
But I figured, I will disclose that I was a bartender at Louis Louis, that he owned before he owned Luigi's Coal Fire, and I was an excellent bartender.
Did he tip you recently?
He did not tip me recently.
Okay, good.
So we're okay. I haven't worked for him in probably 25 years.
Okay, you're fine.
Thank you.
I simply did a site visit.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Chair. Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chalkers, representing the property owner. I did leave some voicemails, too, so might not have gotten them yet, but this is for Luigi's Coal Oven Pizza. It's located at 1415 East Las Holes Boulevard. They opened originally in 2012, and have been a very successful pizza restaurant since. They do about 50/50 takeout and dine-in, leaning more towards 60% takeout these days, but it's pretty evenly split between the two. This is a close-up of the site, and the reason we're here, just going to go back to a fun time of COVID. And during COVID, a lot of indoor dining restrictions were happening. Luigi's inside, it's not a very large place, and Luigi's, along with a lot of other places, the city allowed them to put outdoor dining out during COVID, to meet, you know, all of the restrictions that were around at the time. They were very successful with their outdoor dining, the neighborhood loved it, Luigi's loved it, so they kept the outdoor dining, like a lot of others did. But then a couple of years later, code enforcement came out and cited them for having outdoor dining without an outdoor dining permit, even though it was allowed during COVID. So, kind of punished them and made us come and go through this process here, but that's why we're here tonight, and it's for just that outdoor dining area. You can see on the back right, this area was previously paved before, wasn't used for anything, people were parking scooters on there, but it wasn't really parking, and it was a perfect spot for outdoor dining. It's about 800 square feet. This is a view from the side, couple tables and chairs. As for the parking reduction requirements, there are really only three applicable requirements. The parking reductions have a lot of ands and ors. I kept, all of the ands are in here, so the first one and the third one are required for any parking reduction application. And number two is one of the ways to satisfy the criteria for a parking reduction. So I'll go through, the first school capacity, park capacity. None of those were applicable except for water, wastewater, and there's plenty of capacity for the extra 800, 900 square feet of dining. And then we had the letters in the backup. The adequate public parking within 700 feet of the property, this is Los Olas, there are public parking facilities everywhere and a lot of parallel parking as well. We did have this study that backed up that there's plenty of parking. Most of the time, you know, they would need nine extra spaces for this spot. Most of the time, there's triple, quadruple, quintuple that amount. But even on the peak, peak times, there's more than enough parking to satisfy what this would be required. These are the parking lots within 700 feet. Interestingly enough, the First Presbyterian Church, which has public parking and it's metered, is not allowed to be counted in this study. New change in the city's policy. So there's even excess, more parking than in the study since First Presbyterian is actually a metered parking place for the public. And the last criteria is the compatibility with the surrounding area. We did have two public participation meetings. The first one was in September of last year, we've been at this for a while. That was with the Board of the Coley Hammock Civic Association, and they voted unanimously to approve the project. And the second was in January of this year when we did our required public participation, where we sent the mail to everyone within 300 feet. And I guess we had been discussing this enough with everybody in the past that nobody came to that meeting. But the board unanimously voted for approval, no issues with compatibility, and there's plenty of parking in the area. And Luigi's is a beloved institution in that area. That's it.
Anyone from the, I don't think there's anyone left in the public here. Anyone from the public want to speak on this, seeing no one? I'll close it, I'll bring it back to the board. I do have a comment on it. So I remember back when Luigi's opened, this was originally going to be outdoor dining, and that's why it's a different, it is a different pave, a different pavement from the regular parking. At that time, there was not a lot of parking around. The church didn't have parking. I think one of those parking lots wasn't open, so I feel like they didn't put in for it, or maybe they were denied for it. But I know that since COVID, literally, it's been there for three or four years. That parking, their parking lot anyways is not that big to begin with, and I don't know if anybody's been in Luigi's. It is a very small, at one time, it was, it was just a, I don't know if it was a gas station there, I remember it was like, it was a gas station, then it became like some sort of novelty shop, but it was never a big parking lot. And I don't think opening this up, if you made these into spaces, I think you'd maybe get two spaces, but I honestly don't remember anyone ever parking a car on those spaces, specifically because it's a different type of material, it was like a paver material. So I don't think anyone ever thought like that was parking spots. So no one really ever parked on those parking spots. So normally, I am against parking reductions, as everybody knows. I'm not a fan of parking reductions. But when it comes to this application, because there is so much parking around, and especially the church parking, which is very rarely filled, I think I'm in favor.
Interesting comment.
Well, not, on Sundays it's filled, okay? On Sundays, I believe, it's filled. But during the week, it's very rarely filled. It's a paid parking lot. And then besides the other paid parking lots, that was pointed out by council, I'd never seen a problem with individuals going into Luigi's. And if there was a problem, Luigi's would probably go out of business if they couldn't sustain individuals coming and going from there. So I'm in favor of the parking reduction. Anyone else want to speak on the behalf?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, sorry. Thanks, Brad. I, too, do not generally favor parking reduction. I've talked about that before. I continue to say I wish the commission would address it because we shouldn't, if we are faced with the routine opportunity to do this, then there's something wrong to begin with the code. I think we've all hammered that out. Here, I might even wonder whether at that end of Los Olas, there is significant parking beyond that. I guess I don't go up there enough to know, but I know that the other end of Los Olas is impossible to park, impossible. So I get a little hesitant to do that, inasmuch as this has been there now since COVID, and you have evidence, a study that suggests that it would be adequate, based on that, I can support it.
Anybody want to make a motion? Or do you have anything else? Have anything to say?
I move to approve Brad as the main spokesperson for Luigi's.
That's nothing to do with anything. I'm just familiar with.
No, I agree, I agree. I mean, I think that the amount of parking on Los Olas to like render Luigi's like unable to use their outdoor dining, which is like a nice place to eat, would be ridiculous.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve UDP S23052. And that is a site plan level three. So adopt the resolution approving a site plan level three, case number UDP S23052, based on the following findings of fact, or I'm bet it meets the criteria of the ULDR. And the board hereby finds that it meets the standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the proposed use as cited in the resolution. If there are any conditions, those are also included as part of this approval.
There is one condition in the staff report, do you adopt that as well?
Adopted.
And do you adopt the findings of fact in the staff report?
Adopted.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Momano has seconded, and you can take a vote.
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Ms. Momano?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Next up is eight. We save the best for last. UDP T24004, adoption of the City of Fort Lauderdale redevelopment units policy.
Hello again, I do have a presentation. Thank you. And then can I use it with the arrow button? All right, good evening, board members. I'm Nancy Garcia Garcia with Urban Design and Planning, and this evening I will be presenting the City of Fort Lauderdale's plan to request redevelopment units to Broward County pursuant to the redevelopment policy in the Broward County land use plan. A little bit of background, the redevelopment policy, which is policy 2.35.1, was introduced in 2017. Essentially, it allows municipalities within Broward County to apply for the redevelopment units with the idea that eventually the flex units would expire or no longer be available. For those that are not familiar with what the flex units are, essentially, they are the redevelopment, residential entitlements that were allotted through the Broward County Plan and whatever the respective municipality was entitled to. There is a difference, and that's what the flex units essentially took care of. The city adopted a unified flex policy and map in 2018, and as I mentioned earlier, to date, there are no longer any flex units available. And the idea is that the redevelopment units would pretty much be a tool in order to address the growth, the residential growth of the Broward County municipalities, and in this case, City of Fort Lauderdale. One of the first things that is required to apply for the redevelopment units is that the city itself has to have less than 250 flex units, which in this case, the City of Fort Lauderdale qualifies. And that being said, the city will be requesting its first allotment of redevelopment units, and the policy allows the cities to apply for 500 units at a time. So this will be our first request. As I mentioned, the application criteria, first one would be that the municipality has less than 250 flex units available. The next one would be to establish the receiving area. What the city has planned to do is the same footprint that is allocated for the flex units, that's where the redevelopment units will be allocated. So in other words, to kind of make it simple, the redevelopments will pretty much serve as another term or another flex unit. So they'll be allocated in the same areas with respect to any zonings that are east of the intercoastal. So they'll still follow the same flex map. And typically, the flex map encompasses major transit corridors such as North Federal, Sunrise, Commercial, and Oakland, and also it encompasses most of the regional activity centers. The application is also included as Exhibit 1 in the staff report, and it also required us to demonstrate sufficient capacity for public facilities such as sewer and water, and also show how the municipalities address school concurrency. Most residential, or all of the residential developments that are presented to us or reviewed do require a letter from the school board addressing the school concurrency. So that would always be required. And also, the application requires the municipality to show how we are implementing, or if we are implementing affordable housing, and the city does have an affordable housing policy in place currently. The application also requires us to show how we demonstrate land use compatibility and also sea level rise priorities, or sea level rise in priority planning areas. The comprehensive plan has an element for sea level rise in the planning, in the priority planning areas, which is also included as an exhibit in the report. And land use compatibility is typically reviewed at the time of site plan review. So whenever these projects come in, we would be reviewing that in that time. And also, the way that the city plans to implement the redevelopment policy would be, if we're two ways, would be transfer of development rights. We currently don't have a plan for transfer of development rights to another property, especially for the sale or preservation of historic buildings. So the redevelopment units would be a way for us to implement that. And the main way that we believe that this will be implemented would be for smaller infill projects. And the way that we're going to cap it is that any project that is eligible to apply or request the redevelopment units, they're limited to 50 units, because of course, 50, 500 is not that much, and we don't want one project to come in and just take all the units. So they are capped at 50 units when they do come in. And another way that this would, this policy would be implemented would be, there are some projects that do not qualify for other policies, such as the affordable housing policy. For example, the affordable housing policy is only allowed for certain land uses, and also the property has to abut certain roadways. So in the event that a property does not meet this criteria, they wouldn't be able to either use flex units or even use any type of redevelopment unit. So that's the idea of us requesting the redevelopment units for this area. And then on the map, it shows the existing flex map area, which is also going to serve as the receiving area for the redevelopment units. And as I mentioned earlier, they include the city's regional activity centers and also includes the major transit corridors. I would like to also share that we did meet with the Harbordale Civic Association, and we also met with the Council for Civic Association for the City of Fort Lauderdale. A lot of the questions were just clarification as to what the intent of the policy is and just understanding what the redevelopment units really are going to serve. So after Planning and Zoning Board, we would be required to do city commission, and then Planning, the Broward County Planning Council, and then lastly, would be approved by the Broward County City Commission, or County Commission, sorry. That's the end of my presentation.
Anyone from the public to speak on this matter, seeing no one to, from the public speaking on the matter, I'll close it to the public, bring it back to the board. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Yes. Ms. Momano?
I was going to disclose that I was at a meeting of the Harbordale Civic Association where this was presented, so that's my disclosure.
I think that we didn't do disclosures on this, did we? I think I might have missed it. Did I miss it?
This is legislative, so you don't need to.
Oh, I don't even, I knew that. That's why I didn't do it. I was testing you, and you passed. You did great.
Can we, can we go, questions? Can we go back to two things? Can you show me the flex map again?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, that's the unified flex map, okay. I believe that map actually on 17th Street goes across the intercoastal to Pier 66.
Well, for the receiving area, the policy doesn't allow us to allocate any units east of the intercoastal.
So it's not the flex units, it's the flex, it's not the flex map?
It's not, not completely.
It's the flex map on this side?
Correct.
Including the Oakland Park, Oakland Boulevard parcel?
Correct.
Although I think, I think I see it there.
Yeah, it's actually, it just stops right before, right before where the D is in Boulevard. It'll stop right before that.
Okay, so the two parcels that ended up on the beach in the flex unit map are not eligible for this?
No, it's exactly this map.
Well, then, why did you take out Pier 66 and not the other ones?
Are there any units on the barrier island was, can I ask that question, Mary?
Yeah, that is the question.
On the barrier islands, we can't allocate it on there.
Okay, and, and I know that was the testimony to planning and zoning in 2018 and subsequently, somehow, we don't know how, there were two areas of the barrier island where they did do it. Is this different because it's redevelopment?
Right, and the way that the policy reads, the redevelopment policy, it specifically states that we would not be able to allocate, or it's not allowed to be allocated on the barrier islands. So it would, in that sense, it is different, yes.
Okay, good. Second, second question. Could you go back to the where it's applicable, please? The where, the where, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Transfer of development rights to me is golden, okay? But I have some still concerns about the infill requirements, largely because I still don't understand it. When you say the projects are not to exceed a total of 50 units, is that the total project of 50 units, or they can only request 50 units?
They can only request 50 of the redevelopment units.
So if I have a development on 17th Street, or not on 17th Street, because they can do whatever, they can do whatever they want, but even on 17th Street, they can request another 50 units out of this pile?
No, so a better example would be, let's say there's a property that would be allowed to use the affordable housing policy.
Right.
They can do 50 units of the redevelopment, and then let's say the project is a total of 100 units total. They can do 50 of the redevelopment, and then if they qualify for the affordable housing, they can do 50 affordable housing, for example.
Well, let me give you an example. On 17th Street, there's a project, I think it's on 9th Street, that is using affordable housing, and they're maxing it out, but, okay, they're using affordable housing. They can now come back and ask for another 50 market rate housing? Or do they have to have, the extra 50 has to be affordable?
I don't think that applies to the redevelopment units or...
Nancy, if I can clarify, it's for smaller info projects, so I'll disagree with your previous statement in that the way that the criteria were written is to accommodate smaller infill projects, maximum 50 units per acre. So there's one area, I think is a good example, would be south of 17th Street where you've got Miami Road.
Yep.
And there's an underlying land use of employment center, but the zoning is RMM25. And those property owners in that area have historically had a very difficult time to redevelop. Now that there's no flex units, they actually have no opportunity to redevelop townhouses and the like. And so for projects like that, for example, this would be a great opportunity for them. They're typically not more than 50 units. And then obviously, for the transfer of development rights to preserve historic buildings.
Yes, but I, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure all the people on South Miami Road who want to redevelop appreciate that. But what I'm concerned about is, I don't want to incentivize, permit, whatever word you want to use, additional density in the city, because I don't think we need additional density. Let me just tell me, it is additional, it's 500 additional units.
The example that I gave you, the RMM25 permits 25 units to the acre. They would not be able to exceed that density, but they have no units to pull from currently.
I understand that because of the conflict between the zoning and the land use. That, let's, granted, let's put that aside, but let's go to 17th Street, and we talk about, there's three development projects, no problem, we supported them, okay? But now, can they come back and ask for an additional 50 units of market rate housing and pull those units? Because you're not limiting it to small projects of only 50 units. You're simply saying the allocation limitation is 50 units.
I think that's the part we need to clarify, it's that it's limited to smaller info projects of 50 units.
Well, please do, because to me, I think that would be great. I think those small projects tend to be affordable, okay? Or less luxurious than the bigger projects. So if you're telling me that the total number of units in any development can exceed 50, okay, and maybe all of them are the 50 here, or maybe they have 25 of themselves and they get another 25, if you're telling me the cap on the number of units in the developments that will receive these units is 50, then I would support this. Is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm telling you.
Thank you. So if you're telling me that the total number of units in any development can't exceed 50, okay, and maybe all of them are the 50 here, or maybe they have 25 of themselves and they get another 25? If you're telling me the cap on the number of units in the developments that will receive these units is 50, then I would support this. Is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm telling you.
Thank you.
Could we make that part of the motion, Ellen?
You sure can.
So that it's clear when it gets to commission that that was our recommendation?
I am indeed. If I could find the key.
Can I ask other questions?
Well, I've got a question. Who do you want to go to?
I think it was 12, about 12,000, or 12,000 or 13,000?
Yeah, I don't want to misquote, so we can get that number for you.
I don't know the exact number.
And that was 12,000 in 2018, when you passed the flex unit policy?
It wasn't that many.
No, it wasn't that many, I don't think so either, so. I'm just...
Again, I'll give you that number. I really don't want to misquote. I can certainly follow up with that number.
All right, thanks.
But a lot of them were allocated to downtown. Because as you can see on the map, majority of the area where the receiving, that received the units from the rest, from the remainder of the city, ended up in the downtown. And therefore, now the rest of the city where some of these areas exist, like the one I mentioned, you know, do not have a pool of units to pull from. So we think that this 500 increment, you know, and each time we do this, we have to come back in front of the board, in front of the county, in front of the commission. It's really not a significant huge ask, but it does solve a problem for some of these developers that are in these areas that are a little bit more difficult. And also, obviously, with the historic preservation program, it's a big part of that as well.
I think the controversy, as, I probably don't need to say this to everybody, but the controversy became when planning and zoning and council and all were told that it would not be the barrier island. And then somehow, the barrier island ended up on the map, so. And whoever's making the motion, let's clarify, it's not on the barrier island and there's a cap of 50 units for the project.
Okay, can I, can I do that?
Not yet. Mr. Baranco wants to speak first.
I want to do this.
I know you do. Just hold on to your horses. So what, what would be the frequency of these 500 unit requests? How often can we do it? Do we have to exhaust the first 500 units before we ever ask for another 500?
You have to get down to less than 250, and then you could make the request.
With the redevelopment, I believe it's less than, if we have less than 10%.
Sorry, 250 in flex, I apologize.
If it's less than 10%, then we can request another 500.
Okay, and then, has there been any discussion about tying any of this to affordable housing, or it's just completely separate and apart?
It's sep, it's separate from that.
Okay, because, you know, I've always said, the only way we're going to get affordable housing is if you incentivize it with, given a market rate. Because every time you throw affordable housing into the mix, people are like, well, I'm not going to make money on it.
I think to Ella's point, for example, like the Miami Road, like it's more for properties that wouldn't be eligible to even do the affordable housing or use the affordable housing incentive. That's the main idea. Because right now, like the property on Miami Road, they're stuck. They can't, they can't move on, move forward their project. And they're only asking for 17 residential units. So they're stuck until, basically until this can get approved. So that would, that's really the intent for the redevelopment units, for these areas that they otherwise wouldn't have any other way to...
My point being, there's a line of developers that are saying, I really want to build, and you have control over these units. Why can't they build two or three affordable units to get this? I'm just wondering why that question hasn't been asked, or why isn't it incentivized that way, so. There been no discussions about that?
No, I think the idea is just that we just keep it separate, since we already have like the affordable housing policy already, like to implement.
And we still have a pool of affordable units as well, yeah.
And then, the historic transfer rights, that's something we approved years ago. And we're saying that that policy doesn't work without this?
Well, I mean, it wasn't years ago, it was a couple of years ago, but...
Well, that's years. That's true.
But, yeah, so, yeah, part of that policy requires us to have units to offset the request, so.
Yeah, I'm really confused by this. So if I own a property that's zoned RMM 25 outside of all these flex areas, I couldn't do 25 units per acre?
If you are in a zoning that's RMM 25, yes, then your maximum density is 25 units per acre.
So the only difference between my property and the guy on Miami Road is Miami...
Your land use is different. Your land use, your underlying land use is residential, correct? Yeah, correct.
So how, I'm confused as to why it doesn't work with the policy we have in place now for historic buildings. If we preserve the historic building, we always said, all right, I have a historic building on an acre of property, and I'm going to sell my development rights, and I'm going to preserve this building, and you get to have my 25 acres.
25 units.
Or I'm sorry, the 25 units, thank you. So you can have my 25 units, here's what it costs, you pay me, you have them, you know, they encumber my property, the historic property. It doesn't work that way now?
Where they exist, yes, but where there is no pool of units. So for example, in the rack or in this area, you know what I mean? If you have no pool.
Now, I understand. So it's a historic building that would be affected by the underlying land use, where they only have flex. You made that very clear for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think that...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval. I recommend approval of case number UDP S 23052. And the board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I don't think that was the right case number.
I'm not reading the right one?
The case number starts with the letter T.
May I suggest...
Well, okay, I got the wrong piece here. Thank you very much. T, sorry, I even wrote it in. UDT, yes, hang on, P T 24004, just to be correct. Please start, I'm going to start again. I'm making a motion to recommend approval of case number UDP T 24004. And the board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR are consistent with the comprehensive plan. How would you like me to phrase the clarification that none of these redevelopment units will be available to developments on the barrier island? And none of these projects that are eligible to receive these redevelopment units will exceed a total of 50 units?
Second.
I would suggest stating that none of the units east of the intercoastal will be eligible to receive these units. Or, and none of the receiving sites shall be located east of the intercoastal. Because that's in line with what the land use plan states, the Broward County Land Use Plan.
Okay, what she said?
Yes.
Okay? And then, and then of course, with the clarification that none of the projects that are eligible to receive these redevelopment units will exceed a total of 50 units.
So just to clarify, it's to receive those units, correct?
No. They will not, to receive the units, they cannot exceed...
50.
50 units.
Okay.
The project cannot exceed 50 units.
The total project, regardless of what you see.
Cannot receive 50, more than 50 units.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Momano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
He's waiting on your total.
You got it, everybody. That's okay, listen, it's all right. All right. Now we can move on to communication to the city commission? Or do we want to save that for the good of the city? Which one, Mary?
Well, I, can we just talk, and you can be on whatever you want?
Sure.
And I just, I just feel like we've had a lot of conversation about setbacks recently. And then we've also had a lot of conversations in the, in the community and with consultants about how do we address having more grass and less concrete? And I, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can just have a conversation on how we're using setbacks to accomplish these rezonings in the rack and the uptown? Or not? I mean, maybe we have to do it lot by lot by lot.
Are we having a discussion just between us, or is that to be a question sent up to the city commission?
I would like to have the conversation before we determine, ask the commission to...
Get them through the system by us, the staff taking on the rezoning, taking it through the process. So in that area, it's piecemealed sort of by design. In the northwest rack, there, if you recall, there had been a master plan that kind of created a vision for the area. And the reason we ended up with the zoning designations that you have along Sistrunk Corridor, and really the main corridors, is because there wasn't necessarily full agreement as to the more internal residential areas. With, so the vision was that along the corridors, and as things kind of redevelop a little bit, piece by piece, and as things exist in this area versus another, I do feel like there is a difference because the underlying land use actually, you know, kind of informs you to say, this is a regional activity center. It's intended to serve a multitude of mixed uses, not just purely residential, as you would see in other areas. So certainly, we have communicated this in the past that we, you know, can kind of take another look and work with the community to address in that northwest area, for example, and respect the residential borders. It does talk about things like transition zone. The form of buildings with the lower reduced setback, because you're talking about the difference of, you know, it's gone to five feet. It's really with the premise of, there's still landscape requirements, and there's also a stepback requirement next to the residential areas. In the form of the building, sort of the back areas in the neighborhoods. But yeah, you know, it wasn't easy to build consensus in that broader area. It just, it took years and years, as you all recall. And not everyone was on the same page, not one way.
And the city's doing it. When Central City came to us, that was staff that was doing it, when it's...
So I think like when we talk about the northwest rack, I think we need to distinguish like the, everything west of the Progressive Village neighborhood and east of like 7th Avenue, you know, today. There's a lot of industrial buildings there, there's, you know, moving in the right direction. And then there's ones like the one...
Four, and are becoming more important as we go forward and we learn space and trees and drainage in the side yards in terms of landscaping and green space and trees and drainage, drainage as well. So, but I want to go back to the issue of the interface between the racks and the residential units. Because I've seen it now, I haven't been here very long, I've seen it five times on these projects, where we keep taking another five foot yard, even though it then goes up and steps back, going up to 120 feet as well. It might, the transition just might need to be a little more subtle and a little more neighborhood friendly. That's what I'm thinking about in terms of bringing something to the attention of the commission.
I just want to throw one thing in.
Yeah.
Because it's getting late.
Yes.
The only thing that I want to throw in is this. Asphalt, rock, impervious materials, that when they're redeveloped and there's a smaller yard, let's say it's five feet or 10 feet, they're under the requirements to keep the water on that property. And there's certain requirements that these properties now don't meet whatsoever, that when there's a new development, they have to meet. A lot of these properties, we're taking a step, we're taking a leap of faith that these properties, number one, are affordable housing.
That's a leap.
A lot of these, a lot of these properties that I've seen that are being...
It's a leap.
A lot of these, a lot of these properties that I've seen that are being replaced, we can call them affordable housing, but they are not upkept. They're, they're not somewhere where you would want someone for affordable housing to be living in. So if I can improve that property, if I can give it to a... That to me is a win. So I get what you're saying. It's not that I disagree with everything you're saying. But I think that this is a bigger discussion than just us shooting the shit.
I agree, and that's why I, by setting the side yard, you know, by doing the modifications that we did when we did some of these racks.
Let's wrap this up.
Yeah, we can wrap it up. I mean, just one last thought. I, Brad on... Industrial to Northwest Rack, the area bounded by Sistrunk to the south, 9th Avenue to the west, Sunrise to the north, and 5th Avenue.
Industrial side of Fort Lauderdale, I understand the development. But there is a, there is a need in every community for some industrial areas that have to... I will agree with you that the industrial area in Fort Lauderdale, if you guys really want to do this, sit down with the city, discuss the overall plan. But the fact of the matter is, there's individual property rights. And I'm not prepared to recommend that an individual property...
Incompatible for...
With the new zoning.
Oh, plenty of...
Then I respect your opinion. I respect your opinion.
I'm just curious, what's the impetus? What's of creative uses, creative office, creative retail? There's 150,000 square feet of creative adaptive reuse of industrial opening there. This area is, I don't see it as an industrial area long term. I see this as like a winwood for Fort Lauderdale long term. And it's not permitted under industrial, and it's holding it back.
Okay. Understood.
All right.
An input from the neighbors, developers, and property owners, et cetera. So anything that's done, obviously, will go in front of this board. And ultimately, that directive would be from the city commission. But there have been a lot of recent discussions about it.
All right. All right, most to adjourn?
All right.
Some move.
Let's do it. Let's do it.